Few minutes. Remind me unless you want it now, I have a thing that I got to figure out with Lindsay on cell phones and jet packs.
Okay.
What there, you know, there's a few that like Gettles and Nicole is like, I don't know where they're at. Are we ready? How many are on there? I can't see. Remind me afterwards, the bear festivals to talk to you about.
Okay.
I'll forget this. Alrighty. You ready? Ready? Okay. So I called it. Oh, that's a, we gotta call this here in order, or sorry, the council meeting order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Alrighty. So any agenda modifications or acceptance of the agenda for tonight?
And make a motion to accept the agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Think I heard fours. Okay. Alright, so next is the public hearing for the six-year transportation improvement plan. Was our presentation went along with it or?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure because it was under special presentation, so. Not no worries.
Yeah, if you find something that we ever do. Great Osborne leftover updated all the numbers for us for this year. I sent it out. Great safety of the public work committee did their impact, so. And currently, and that's what we're looking to do for the future for until next year.
Okay, we'll start then for the public hearing portion. If anybody here, there's only two of you, want to testify for the the six-year plan? No? Anybody online wants to testify over the six-year plan? For the public hearing? I think star nine, star six is unmute, star nine is to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Otherwise, they should have a little button at the bottom. I don't see any. Okay, then we will close the public hearing. Alright. So public comments, is there any public comments about the agenda tonight? Okay. So consent agenda, do we have any questions or a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we pass the consent agenda.
All in favor? Any pose? Alright, so passed. Alright, updates. So we're gonna start with the RCO grant. I don't know if you want to take that since you did the presentation yesterday?
Yeah, RCO grants for Simpson properties. We did the first phase, which is a technical review, our presentation in front of the technical review board yesterday, got comments back. I have improved the presentation and the official, official presentation is due in August, so there'll be be able to take it, take time to improve our presentation from the comments today for the August presentation for in front of the whole state board.
And I forgot to ask you earlier, do they tell us when the date is or do we coordinate with the grant manager?
The grant manager that's in this basically dates when they have openings, have a week open and you pick the date preferred time and then go through it and then sign the bill.
Okay, awesome. And then so everybody's aware of the, only the one grant for the Simpson properties, the only one that went through, not the other one. Because it was a lot of hoops to jump through and we didn't get all our information, so. Any questions on that one?
Can I please be sent a copy of that presentation?
Yeah. Do you want it before or after we make the changes or both?
Um, I, I'd like to say before, I might have some feedback.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Public Works staff reports, any questions on those?
I had a question to Kevin, it was just something really simple, but there was a reference to cleaning out a ditch or I'm trying to find it, hang on just a second.
Is Kevin on there? I can go base on what he told me last week, but.
Okay, I just was, I was just curious. Sam's Canal and what was that and where is it?
So Sam's Canal is, it starts behind the Shell Station or behind the Shell Station in City Hall there where it goes, the grid goes under the ground and it's, it's pipe under the ground from the Shell Station down to Seven Street where it pops out by Seventh and Maple. Through there, they runs to Wildcat Creek, East Fork, Wildcat Creek Town, past the tree plant, but everything they turn to is on Sam's Canal. Trees will go sideways in the second grid and usually they go through there, yeah, they have a nature group with it's wildlife that we are allowed to go through, pull out, get obstructing, uh, to tear off that time or get the grid. Ready now, you have to get a chart of people permit to do that and that's usually twelve to eighteen months out and we have a pipeline, so. It was more likely to either brush, remove the brush and make sure that it's hogging up the water flow.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Alright, then we're.
Sorry, let's start in reverse. I just had a question on the public works, when it talked about the getting the rock and asphalt crushed and so then do we have a plan on when that's going to be moved out of that area?
The rock asphalt has been crushed. I'll finish last Friday, took them two days to crush it. We have equipment coming in tomorrow, dump truck loaders and we are moving that material starting probably Friday and early next week.
Perfect, thank you.
Todd, where are they moving it to?
Uh, we have a utility right away up off of Sand Creek, Old Sand Creek Road. That we are putting down as a base for roads, we have a base for road for a utility agent through Simpson, that guy Simpson there, drive along. There's a cross the creek, right guy Simpson, they're telling you, we're gonna use like, those are the three spots that we utilize, but that we sign on utilizing we have extra, we have reservoir road and that all the roads.
So it's already planned out where it's all going, it sounds like.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And counties aware and we're all good and everything's been orchestrated properly. Okay. Alright. I thought you said, I'm sorry. So now we're do the new business, the grant writer process update.
Grant writer process, they went out to RFP for grant writers to have a pool of grant writers to apply for these different grants. We received one batch. I sent it out to you, the proposal, it's a good company, they're experienced in the budget transportation and parks grants. And we'd like to have permission to, you know, negotiate for a contract with the grant writer.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could see that. And then on that, I know that there is a ton of federal money out there right now and I'm sure that you guys have all been getting it from different organizations, but NACO, I don't know if you guys have checked out their site, National Association of Counties. They actually have a full site of all the different programs that are out there that have a ton of them are infrastructure, road projects, bridge projects, things like that, but you know, that's just hearing that they do transportation and things like that. I know that right now there's a ton of money out there for different programs and and I just know that that site has a lot of information on it, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have something?
No, actually, I've asked Todd on staff, we could hear the answer.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's fine with Jenna and I have very similar questions, so.
Great minds, right?
Okay. So we'll send out the RFP and then
put up. If you want additional or grant writers or right now we want to enter into contract negotiation with the current.
Yeah, the current, the current RFP is only more infrastructure related, so it's didn't cover everything that we were hoping. With like emergency services on all the other things, so we want to, we're gonna send another RP out to try to see if we can, because the whole intent was to get a pool and try to get multiple ones, because sometimes it specializes in certain areas. So that's what we're kind of looking at is we're gonna go back on RP, but we would like to get the one that deals with the infrastructure. They're an engineering firm and they kind of specialize in all of those areas, so.
Yeah, I think that's great, just to put another one just open so that if we do get more of it, we have opportunity, but at least you get this one going because like I said, I know that these are the two major ones are transportation and parks, it's like, so.
And a lot of the transportation infrastructure ones also, we can reach out to engineering firms, even Great Osborne and Stevens. Basically, you ask them to write a grant and you if they don't write a grant, if you give them the work design, and so a lot of them move for free if they get the work. Todd, did we ever use or reach out to Evergreen for their grant writing program, the college? I remember just over the years how I'm like talking about it. Yeah, we have not reached out, we reached out to St. Martin's before, okay, they longer off of the program, okay, so I did not reach out to Evergreen yet, okay.
We, we need a motion to approve, to go to negotiation for the initial contract.
To, to award the RFP to David Edwards and Associates, is that what we need or?
Just to, I would go with contract, or yeah.
Because this will have to prove the contract once it's written.
Okay. Okay, so I'm not hearing all of this, so have you already selected somebody or are you sending out another RFP for a second grant writer? I'm a little bit confused.
Yes, we're doing both. So the, the grant writer we got specializes in infrastructure, dealing with RCO grants, those kind of things, streets and such, and so we want to lock in that one, but we're gonna send RP out because we kind of were hitting all of our city categories. And so we want to try to see if we can still get a pool of grant writers, could, ones that would specialize in the other areas aren't being covered.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you.
And so we would just be paying them like on a per project basis, correct? Like it's not like a retainer or anything like that, so we'd only pay for what services we use.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then I would make a motion to authorize contract negotiations with David Evans and Associates.
A second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Alright. Now we're on to the complete streets program overview.
So this is something from Jevie, which Jevie is the transportation board out of Olympia. At the top of their staff. They have a program called Complete Streets. I gave you the background here and they also have funding that is associated with Complete Streets, so I will, I will it's okay with council, would like to draft an ordinance for Complete Streets program and bring it back to you guys for review of possible school. This is just a, another funding mechanism that we can use for, for grants and stuff.
I thought it sounded great. As the idea for biking sidewalks and streets, I think that's what a lot of citizens have been wanting is, is more of that availability.
Right.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I talked to Todd earlier and Todd, this was the one that you were, you were telling me about, that we have to have an ordinance in place and like a program in place to even be able to apply for certain grants and and such, correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, we saw that they don't have a template for us to use, we're coming up with a scratch.
Yeah, they gave us some examples of ones they liked or.
Okay.
Or basically steal somebody else's.
Yeah.
That works. Okay. I assume you don't need a motion for that, that was just everybody on board. Okay. Let's see, so next. Pedestrian and bikes, bicycle safety grant update.
So that's point one, that is, we apply for the different kinds of grant program to watch. But you see, this is the estimated cost of it with contingency and it comes out to a little bit over a million dollars. We won't hear an answer until next year, so. We, you need to have money in the budget for next year for a fifty thousand dollar naturally, we ended up coming up with, so. Yeah, it's a lot of sidewalks, a lot of improvements and you see the estimate and also the locations of where the improvements would be.
And these would all be made ADA compliant and brought, brought up to spec and everything for the designated spots that we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what was the total grant that we applied for?
One million and sixty-five thousand.
Okay, so it was the whole project total and then you're saying it just has a fifty thousand dollar match?
We chose five percent, which.
Okay.
It helps and it, so I have.
Helps to look better.
Once you get to a million dollars, up to a million dollars, the match counts for nothing towards the grant point total. Once you get to a million dollars and above, your match counts a little bit towards the grant, your grant point system, so.
Okay.
Here's a fairly over, which it is what it is. We decided to throw some money to try to get our best chances to get some.
No, I mean, that's hardly anything compared to, you get a million dollars worth of sidewalk work done.
Right.
And I think there's a couple of them that you have on here, like the being marked crossing at the VFWs and things like that, you know, I think some of those would be great too, because I see people crossing there all the time.
Yes.
Where there's no crosswalk, so.
They have rapidly fashion. Rapidly, rapidly flashing beacons on that crosswalk, so it can be lighted up, so it's all on.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
That's the, well, we've been talking about, right? Those are the lights you can talk about, that's not at the location, like, okay, if you have another crosswalk, right? Under the, I was about to say. Okay.
Okay, any other questions with that one? Okay. So next is the fireworks booth approval.
This is every year thing. Olympic Christian Center comes in and asks for approval to park in the park to sell the fireworks. They print and all the, all the application materials to Larry, Larry inspects it and ensures.
The only question I had is they asked either to do the parking or to be in the grass area between the train and the sidewalk?
Yeah, they're talking about the grass area between the train and sidewalk, just to have easier access to power, which.
Well, I was just thinking it would be nice because we wouldn't be eating up parking spots at the park and everything either, so to me it's kind of dead space anyways, so I, I was like, oh, that's kind of a good idea.
So are they thinking of putting up a tent, so the trailer this year?
No, they have a trailer still for the
Okay.
It's, it'd be off, off the main road so you'd be able to pull up there instead of pull around.
Okay. Okay, questions on that?
No.
Okay.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the fireworks stand this year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All pose? Alright, thank you. Alright, so next is the Transportation Investment Improvement Board, crack seal funding.
Yeah, Transportation Board. Talking to, what I was gonna say, the area, they have money for maintenance and crack sealing is a big major item for them. They we have to go through measure how many cracks we have and length of cracks and everything. We have over nine, between nine and ten miles of crack sealing. And we gave them the cost and they said, perfect, we will fund that all if you want to, so this is the grand application for us to fund our crack sealing throughout the whole city.
Oh, that's great.
Sounds good.
And so will our, will we contract that work out?
The city crews are, we're running, so.
Okay, do we have the, the crack sealing tool or are we going to?
We're rented, we'll be rented, so we have a, we have a month, we're, we're gonna have this material machine for over a month, so. It's not like a one week, we're just vague now, we're gonna try to get sections done in a week.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
Need any motion for that one or is there other information?
I need a motion to approve that and sign.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the TIB crack seal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any pose? Alright. Alright, so next is a discussion on new police charger and so I'm gonna preface this, I made a mistake because I misunderstood, I thought the not the one we just bought recently, a few months ago, but the one before that, I thought there was like an eight thousand dollar difference. I didn't realize that there was the taxes and the other stuff that comes in, so they're about the same price, but we'd already done all the work and when we figured this out yesterday, after Todd and I sat down and kind of worked it out. So I figure I just kind of throw the discussion, we're thinking that because of the money, we're kind of saving from the police department with vacancies, we would get the charger now and we thought we would have our fifth vehicle and be done versus buying it next year. But I'm kind of kicking it to you all and let you decide which way you want to go with this.
Thinking about it, I mean, I'm all in favor of the police having the tools that they need, but the SUV that McCollum had before he left, is my understanding, that one's still in good shape, that has little models on it and we were gonna keep it, if I recall correctly, another year or two before we.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking about.
So I, right now, I think we need to wait on any big purchases like a vehicle until we have another chief on board and that person can come in, look, evaluate from their perspective of the department needs and if we can bring it back, if they feel we need another vehicle or if they feel that we can wait another year or two and then replace that one.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I.
Go ahead, Joy.
I, I agree with Bryce and I think that for big purchases like that, it would be really nice to have that new chief make those decisions. And since he's gonna be responsible for the budget.
And I just wanted to add one more, I, I kind of thought of it from that standpoint as well as from a different standpoint of if we buy all of our vehicles at once and although we might have a cost savings right now because we're short-staffed, later on, when it comes time to replace those vehicles, we would have to be replacing all of them at the same time, which might prove difficult if we do have a full, a full, you know, full salaries and, and all of that, so I thought it would be best to maybe stagger our, our bigger purchases out.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I agree with what Andrea said as well.
I, I also agree with everything that's been said, especially considering we have an SUV that's in good shape, so there's not really a, a sense of urgency to purchase a new vehicle right now. I think it's good to wait till we have a chief to make that call.
Alright.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you. Alright, now is the side sewer discussion. I don't understand I and I well enough to explain this one.
I and I infiltration and info, I, I can't afford. Our first is supposed to be a water system. Ideally, so basically when you flush the toilet, you're putting water, you're treating water, that water, whatever water you're using in the house, if we're done, green, should go to our sewer system and we collect it and we treat it and release it back to the creek. I and I is when our sewer system is not watertight and we get some type of infiltration, so usually it's rainwater or some kind of groundwater coming in and it gets notified, it goes down a stream, like, and you have a treatment rainwater or whatever water comes down to this. It, it's an added cost to treat water that we treat, so that's one of our big things at a treatment plant during winter is basically how it flows in the winter is from I and I. Oh, and right now that's kind of, we're, we're focused on trying to eliminate the I and I in different spots, we, we got work coming up. Chris, have the citizens contact you, so can you give the background?
Yeah, so there was a, a couple on Beck Street and they have, what's the, so many different types, the, the pipe with the, the orange.
Orange for, yeah, it's basically a pipe that was, it's wrapped around, it's like car paper wrapped around.
Yeah, and so it's like a hundred years old and it's dissolving and so part of their, their house issue is it's backing up and it's causing, it's causing problems for us and them. And on top of that, so then when they have this backup, then it shuts down, they can't even use their water for like five to eight hours. Like, no thanks, no nothing, it's, it's gotten that bad, but it's also causing issues on our side as well, so what we're trying to figure out is they're on fixed income, so they can't afford to replace everything and they're asking if we can help them, we, we would do the work, but typically the homeowner would pay for those costs, but they're not in a position to. So we were trying to figure out if there's other communities that, that do this or how we can go about this effectively. Todd found this one from Sweet Home City, where's that, it was Oregon, right? Yeah, toward, they have an ordinance that relates to this, you know, more specifically. But we don't know how you all feel and so we kind of need to open up the discussion and seeing how you all want to go about it. If you want to place restrictions or if it's more for those in financial. If you want to place restrictions or if it's more for those in financial need where we can kind of, you know, evaluate that case by case, not do it at all. We're kind of stuck because we've looked at it from a lot of different angles and they all kind of make sense.
And page after the page thirty, after this. If you, uh, we we'll give you time to fix it, we'll go and fix it, basically on your property and build it fix. Or you'll get a four or. We also reached out uh to uh neighbors, neighbor works out of Grace Harbor and C cap out of Grace Harbor and trying to get them in contact with their homeowner to, if they offer any assistance for fixing and stuff like that, so. Last option I want for the city to go in and fix it, because that could open up a whole camp. I don't want to make it worse than for them than it has to be.
So do we have any type of, I mean, I know that we have for some of the other systems, you know, like plans for the bad pipes for these things and and replacement of those. Is there anything, you were like, these ones that are the worst of the worst would be on a like a schedule for repair ever um for a project, or is that not something we do sooner?
Yeah, no, because it is uh with our sewer system, we only serve to a city cleanout and between city cleanout and the home is homeowner responsibility, and that's where the issue is.
Gotcha.
So.
The Paddy Act something? You guys voted council and everybody to spend forty thousand of our American rest money to help um customers. We've given away twenty-three, as I understand, in the neighborhood, we're probably not gonna do any more of them. We have that money sitting there that's been allocated to help needy customers with their bills. But that could, where it could be changed, could we use some of that as a current assistance to help them with this?
Yeah, sorry about that, I didn't look into it, I'm not sure. Um, I mean, afford if we can do it, but I just don't know if.
Well, there's more money in the, you know, we have almost five hundred thousand, but that money was saved for something bigger. But this is money that we've already allocating to assist people that are having some hardships. It's kind of a gray area, but it's something to.
If I can just make a suggestion, I'm I'm all about helping the community, right? And I think Todd is as well. This is something I think you really need to think about, because if we go and prune one tree in the neighborhood, my phone rings for two weeks and that bucket truck is pruning a bunch of other trees that are within the scope of what we we cut or we don't cut, so.
Once you start, it's.
Not that, not that I would be pushing back on, hey, I'm I'm all about opening out someone that's, I mean, we're small, we should be able to do that, but just keep that in mind that.
But there's limits, yeah, you can only do so much.
Once you cut a tree, you're gonna be cutting a lot more, I guarantee.
And it could come down to creating a priority list and just saying, hey, we won't have the capacity, we'll just say, we can only do ten this year. You know, and then we'll add your name, but we can't do it until next year or something, unless it's an emergency situation or whatever, but.
Because I would set funds like this, if there's so much value that people know they can apply for.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember, you gave me the numbers, Todd. What was, what was the amount it cost to do that work?
Uh, it's probably between three, four thousand.
Yeah, I was thinking three, something like that. So that's about what we're looking at, that's for one house.
Can you repeat that number?
It was three up to four thousand.
Three or four? So I I have a couple of questions, do we have any idea, do we have like an inventory of the pipes that are leading to this I and I problem? Or an inventory of those pipes, because my concern would be if if there's only a a couple residences that have pipes that are in the state that are that are leading to this I and I problem that's causing citywide issues, I'd be more in support of fixing them, but if it's like half the pipes or three quarters of the pipes in the city are gonna have this issue, I think that kind of opens a slippery slope of us, you know, fixing pipes on private residences uh that are old.
Yeah, we have an inventory, um, we plan on doing, we do smoke testing, which is the the best way we've done in our city to determine where our issues are. Some of this smoke testing, basically blow smoke into the system and it pops out. Smoke pop out, usually it pops out underneath someone's house and they're in their house, but then we send them a letter saying, hey, you have an issue, please fix the issue, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so we still need to, we're planning on doing that this year still, um, so we'll have an updated list, and we do have a correct our list of problem areas that we dealt with.
Yeah, if if it was a reasonably finite list of problem areas, I would be in support of an ordinance that would support um people on like a financial need basis with like a priority list, something something along those lines, but I think just kind of a broad, a broad system of us, you know, fixing plumbing um for private residences is is a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Todd, what was the response from C cap, do you know?
I don't know, we don't get in the middle of it because it's, we, we don't want to be in the middle of it.
Right, right.
And the C cap and and neighbor works, and so they figure out, they are, if they qualify, if it's low income, there's a lot of different families they can get money from, and we'd be trying to get them, we just try to get them to help.
Could we get, is it a document that we would be able to look at and be able to take anything from to see the problem area pipes? Or is it gonna be a document that we would know nothing about what it looks like?
Yeah, we can, I'd be the, yes.
Okay. Sometimes I know that some of those I look at and probably have no clue what I'm looking at, so I just wasn't sure if it was one that we could actually like, you know, tell.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So would you, I guess as a collective, then would like us to try to figure out if we could put something together that's more restrictive, like that kind of helps those maybe in need, at least kind of try to start working on that language and see what it could look like, or do you want us to sit on this for now?
I think I'd want to see kind of what Max was saying, what 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 does that look like before anyone spends too much time on it, I guess.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
I I agree.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
No, I'd like to have time to look at uh their, what is it, Sweet Homes language and kind of wrap my head around it a little bit. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so no business or the ordinances and resolutions, so six-year transportation improvement plan resolution, which would be seven fifty-one. Any questions on this or a motion for passage?
I read through this, Todd, it looks pretty much the same as it has every year, are there any big changes to it? Pardon?
Just updates for the numbers for the.
Okay, okay, but it's all still, it didn't look any different to me with the plans themselves. Okay.
And the and the Summit Road North, that would be the sidewalk project, do we need to do all of Summit Road or?
Summit Road, that is probably, I, to the six minutes, uh, there'd be Summit Road.
Well, you have Summit Road divided up into three sections.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, as long as that one is on there, I know that's a very large project that we would never be able to fund ourselves, so.
Then which one, Seven Road North?
Seven Road North would be, we didn't apply for any grants for, the public plan of for.
Yeah, I I'm just trying to make sure I understood which one is which, because I thought north was that one, so if that's downtown, then what's north?
North is from Yellow Lake, Mike's.
To Elmhurst?
To, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Are you all filtering through still?
I I like the list, I I think it's appropriate, um, I'm hopeful we'll get some money to actually get some of the stuff marked off, honestly. Um, especially because it's been on on this plan, it sounds for, sounds like for a couple of years, so.
And the recession didn't help, that just.
No, it didn't help, it didn't help, yeah, no. But it sounds like there's plenty, there's there's a lot of opportunity ahead for um applying for grants and and uh and and getting some of this going, so I'm in support of this.
Is any of this something, and maybe because part summit being highway, that we can try to do a request to the legislature on it?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's something I want to work on, I'm gonna try to schedule some time to meet with them later this summer. But I need a project to bring, because I don't know what to ask, so this is something, maybe that's why we use one of these then. Okay, because I figure, especially if it's not that much, then there's no reason why they shouldn't, since everybody else is getting like tens of millions of dollars. I think we can get a couple hundred thousand.
Right, true.
I, I've heard road, the D C I right, um, I know some of the watch out guys won't like it, but um, I think it's good for the legislature to look at and say that according, watch out engineers according to cities who build it better, uh, road with safer.
And one thing that I know that we talked about back when we did strategic planning, what, two years ago or whatever that was, um, that I know that with TIB transportation improvement work and stuff too, that we do not have transit out that way, and that's one of the factors that helps of these applications, is because people have to walk that road to get to transit locations and it's a main connector, and so I mean, the road has a lot of positives for some of these grant programs because it hits a lot of those tickets and um, so I mean, yeah, I'm hopeful that potentially sometime down the road, we would be able to just.
But I think the challenge, trying to remember who I talked to, was you, we were talking about transit, was it you or maybe it was talking to somebody else, that it was a challenge trying to put transit down there in that end because it's not a normal route, like they have to go out of their way, and then they spend a lot of driving.
No, they would still have to walk, but that's why.
I'm talking about the transit itself.
Oh, yeah, but that's why the sidewalks were important, because people are walking from that area to transit.
Yeah.
And and that's one of these random, you like you said, for those different brand, like check marks, like it it's just one of them that helps with our application.
Because it was somebody who asked about us putting transit out there, like a like a bus stop or something, even if it's just some small and it just, there's no, they're not gonna do it because the the cost's going out of their way and then.
How do we get all the way back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could, the swap island does have granted that those, through the transportation and swap island, we might go coordinate with the pride if they stop for the casinos.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just think that it opens up some other things, just because we don't have granted there and they have to walk, but sidewalks are really. Somebody need a um motion for a resolution?
Yes, we do.
I make a motion to authorize a six-year transportation improvement plan resolution?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Seven fifty-one. Yeah. All right, so next is ordinance eight seventy-two, the light and power electrical standards update ordinance.
That's the same one we've had last couple months now, um, we got it down to where Paul likes it, I like it, attorney likes it, everyone that's worked on it likes it, so we are ready to pass it.
I I would like to say that I think you guys did a great job on this, Paul, it looks like you worked really hard. It obviously needed updating when you read the stuff that's crossed out, so I appreciate all this work you put into this.
Well, he thought he did all the work, I just.
Had to get him one more time, huh?
And yeah, and made his life more. It's all.
It certainly looks good, it it looks like it was very timely.
Any questions or comments on this ordinance? All right, I'll entertain a motion to pass.
I make a motion, we pass this ordinance, what's the number?
Eight seventy-two.
Eight seventy-two.
I'll second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, yes, oh, sorry, roll call vote, thank you for catching me. I had not an ordinance in a minute, so. Roll call vote, yeah.
Yes.
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 Um, Max?
Yes.
And Andrea?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
So, thank you. Uh, next is the sign ordinance update. I gotta get to Paul's code to find it, hang on.
It's not in here?
I thought it was, oh, no, it is not.
I didn't see a sign ordinance.
So it just says up.
Okay, was that more discussion then on that, or?
I never got the sign ordinance, so.
Okay.
So uh, fit it out, the reality is, the sign will probably will be passed tonight, or we will submit that to you.
Yeah, we can, we'll discuss it next month, so um, they gone back and forth and they've made some provisions, I guess, what you all talked about last month. And so they reflected that and now it's just more of a, see how you feel or if there's more changes that need to be made, so we'll get this sent out. And then last, which should be resolution seven fifty-two, so we are trying to catch up with the state and federal who's already passed Juneteenth as a holiday, and so this is the recognize all our legal holidays, adding Juneteenth as one of them.
So has this been discussed with the, any of the unions?
I told them about it, but I've been, I was more working on putting it together, I, two of them. Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that they're supposed to be pushed back for a holiday, I mean.
It started because the Teamsters were asking for it, yes. Did we want to talk about?
Yeah, you know.
Paul, I'm trying to remember, did I, I know I told you about it today, but did I talk to you about it before? I know Teamsters did, because Dana asked me.
I just saw it when I heard it be counted back, and so.
Okay, so I neglected to inform him, that was my fault. Uh, but but Teamsters were the ones that asked about it to see if we were gonna recognize it this year, and so then that's when we started digging in, trying to figure it out, put it together. And I had forgotten that the federal government had even passed, I knew the state had, so it was just trying to orchestrate and get it all put together, so.
So we're just approving something that's already been approved federally and and statewide?
Yeah, so that way our city recognizes it for our city employees.
Okay.
Well, it's not a requirement, just because the state and federal government do it, it's still, it's still a choice.
So like the state, the state passing it really only affects state employees, and so each individual city has and county has to do their own.
Ah, okay, that makes sense.
If we pass this, will it take effect or for like two weeks from now?
Uh, that was my intent, unless you're gonna disagree with that, I don't.
No, 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 I was making sure that was the case.
Yeah, so the twentieth, because it's the day after, it'd be a Monday, so, yeah, it'd be the twentieth of this month.
And this is a paid holiday to our, to our crews?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'll I'll put forth a motion, we pass resolution uh seven fifty-two.
I'll second.
Okay. All those are favorites?
I.
And pose? All right, thank you. Wow, we actually got through all that, that's impressive. All right, updates, does anybody have any updates they wish to share?
I have something I would like to say.
Sure, go for it.
Well, this being Todd's last meeting, I just wanted to thank him publicly for all that he's done. I had written something up and asked Bryson to read it, but I feel up to reading it, I wasn't sure earlier today. I wanted to thank you, Todd, for all of your hard work all these years for our city, um, not just for our city, but also his coaching, um, being involved with the fire department, um, responding day and night whenever you're needed and the work that you've done with your crew, um, getting them out, and I know that they've, they've done a lot of great work with you. We're gonna miss your knowledge, um. Uh, you you take a lot of historical knowledge with you in your head, I wish we could just put it all into a computer, but I guess we can't. But we're gonna miss that, and I appreciate how you've always been there whenever I've had questions, and you know me, I've got lots of questions. I appreciate your willingness to answer those and um, the the history that you have with our community and your family has with our computer, community. I wish you all the best of luck, we're gonna miss your grant writing skills. I, I, you know, I always teased you and said, I wanted to know a number. I'm sure it's in the millions, the number of dollars you've gotten us over the years. And every time we've needed something new for the city, you always look for a grant to help pay for it. And that's huge. I'm sure you've saved us more money than anybody's aware of doing that. I like your, your good nature and your good attitude and I appreciate that. And you're, and personally, I will miss you. And your absence is going to be a huge loss to all of us, but I wish you the best in your new endeavors. I know you're going to do great where you're going with what you're doing. And you'll leave a big hole in our hearts when you go.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Joy said. I've taught my whole life. He's always been the first either his personal life or at work. So it's going to be whoever takes your position is going to have some pretty big shoes at the city to fill. And of course, your here is on the fire department. And I know that the appreciation for everything you've done here at the city goes beyond the skill that the city is everywhere throughout other departments and counties and states. So, so I want to thank you again for all the years you've given us. Also, I want to highlight Oscar Crawford, who will be leaving at the end of the month and thank him for his dedication services he's done for the clergy. I know a lot of people in the community have really enjoyed having you work here. So I wish him the best for his new department as well.
I'm glad you're going closer to home. Though it, it'll be hard to replace you and you as well. I don't, your family's from here. So I don't think you're getting too far, even if you're moving to another state. I have a feeling you're still going to be around somewhere. So, okay.
And I'd like to say thank you too. And I know I, as well as Joy, have a lot of questions and, you know, you've always answered those for me. And I know that you're on a lot of community boards and, you know, you, a little bit from my time at the county as well. So I wish you luck.
And I came down tonight, Todd, because I wanted to thank you. You've always answered questions to me as a business owner, helped me out. Even when I didn't like the answers that you gave me, your professionalism, your courtesy, your knowledge has been very well seen. Very respected. Wish you the best. It's too bad because of the circumstances of leadership that you're leading and all that goes with that. But you'll be missed and be about impossible to replace from years of, of experience and learning the hard way. And that's commendable because you, you really had to dig to learn your niche and all the money and the grants and then, you know, getting out of bed in the middle of the night to go fight fires and pull people out of the tangled cars out on that highway. It's just, the priority was, it's using a lot. And to echo what Bryson said, Crawford, you're going to be less greatly as well. So thank you for your service officer.
How many years you got in here? Yeah, yeah. But twenty, I was thinking twenty-two. Okay.
That's incredible.
It's a long time once by.
Yeah. Todd, I'll just throw in my two cents as well. I haven't gotten a chance to work with you that long and I wish I could have. So um, thank you for, again, answering questions when I didn't know the answers. I'm sure going to miss being able to just shoot you a quick email, stop by. Tell that I've got your phone number programmed and give you a call. And your time on the fire department. I know you're a, I believe Paul said you're a lieutenant. But I know our fire department's hurting for people and you're one of the leaders there. So, but again, just big shoes to fill. So, thank you.
Any other updates? Oh, sorry, yes.
I was going to write something up and all this is coming up that I'm better off than I can wrote it in my in my staff report. I watched this guy grow from this big. Probably longer than he knows himself. And when he came to the city, he started at very bottom. And worked his way through and, and learned, and he learned by making mistakes. He learned by doing great things. The bottom line is, is when he became my boss, I was like, oh, shit, you know? And I watched, I watched him just grow and grow. And the biggest things about Todd Wong, and there's nobody in this room that's on a higher pedestal, is that his integrity, his honesty, his being able to put his hand up and say, hey, I screwed up and fix the problem. And not take credit for all of the successes that he's performed. He's a great human being and the city is losing a tremendous person. Not only is the public first director, but is the fire department and is a citizen. This man and his family care more about this town than anybody I know. And it needs to be recognized. And Todd, we're going to miss. So. That's all I.
Good. Any other updates? All right. Have a comment. Anybody got a public comment?
Yes, Steve Slesman from the Bear staff. I would like to comment on the chief of police situation and the whole police department. I'd like to thank all five council members for denying the, just ridiculous spending on this mayor, the fact that you depleted the surplus of the police department. And you've now lost three officers in less than six months because you erroneously terminated the chief of police. But you have still not replaced, even though you said you would have an interim within a week or two. So, Mr. Mayor, time's running out. The safety of the people in this town is at risk because of you, because of your malfeasance. And it's time you step down before you cost the city millions of dollars. You have hired your neighbor who's a man of integrity. But because you have not got somebody here to put him through an FTO program, Mr. Mayor, it takes one lawsuit. Was there a proper civil service commission? Nope. So he's going to give, oh, negligence is what it's called. Was he FTOed? Well, he was with the state patrol. Is that the same as being a city cop? No. They don't do burglaries. They don't do domestic violence. They do DUIs, traffic stops, fatalities, accidents. It's night and day. But you have this man out here who was involved in a high-speed pursuit through town within the last couple of months without the FTO. You are putting the city of McLeary, the citizens of McLeary at risk. Step down before you do any more damage. Your malfeasance is not going unnoticed. There's a lot more that's going to bubble to the surface. I've been pretty quiet because I've been doing some damage. They're not going to like it. Step down. Save your own reputation. Save the city the embarrassment of what is coming to you. And save the taxpayers millions upon millions because you're malfeasance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
We have one hand raised.
Okay, who's that?
Yeah, hi, this is Angela Rittinger. I live on Main Street. I would actually like to thank the mayor profusely for cleaning house and getting this town back on track because the trajectory we were headed in was pretty disturbing. Those that look into it and have paid attention know exactly why the chief was let go. I think it's great that we're cleaning house, getting rid of the folks that aren't committed to the town of McLeary, city of McLeary. And that hopefully we can get a fresh start. Change is very hard, especially walking into Mayor Miller, what you did walk into. I know I've had some differences of opinion since you've started. I know I've come at you on a couple of things, but you know, overall, in general, I still support you 100%. I think you want to take this town in a very positive direction. We certainly weren't sitting there. And I think if people just pay attention, try just to not start up rumor and conjecture and things like that and just be patient. I think they're going to see fabulous things happen for the, for the city. Give it some time. Again, you walked into a mess. You've got some things to clean up. You do have a police department that was a mess and that falls on the shoulders of our former chief. He's also the reason why this city faced a lawsuit. So let's get real about that. It was his negligence and his bad decisions that caused that lawsuit. Fortunately, that was handled. And again, the city should be moving in a good direction. I appreciate you taking your time on trying to find a competent chief to come in and run this city. As far as police calls and things like that, it's too bad that the police are wasting time on frivolous calls down to a small little burger joint in town who likes to complain about trash being thrown in his parking lot. He thinks that that deserves a call to the police. So wasting resources there, stolen cone. You know, I mean, get real, there's real crime going on. Let the police do their job. So mayor, I appreciate what you're doing. Stay strong and we'll see where we're at in a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like public comment?
She got a lawsuit? She got money from the city? It's crazy. That's real businesses in town. That shouldn't happen. Who's taking care of the cameras? Did they see who did that to the bear?
Well, no, because I went too far back, but he was able to resolve that. So now that reminds me, did you get a hold of the sculpture?
No, I'll contact.
Okay, do you want, do you want to, you want me to? Okay, either way. Okay. So. Well, there's nobody watching like 24/7. It's usually if something comes up, that's what they're there for. They're on the web. Yeah, it's online.
Can they watch them?
They, they can. No, it's not just one person. But and then when the police chief comes in, they'll have access to all of them. So. Yeah. Any comments? Is that still, is that the same hand or is that a different hand?
I don't know.
Oh, I say yellow mark. Okay. No, that was fun. All right, then we will, uh, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So.
Have a good night, everybody.